You're on, Mayor. Eventually.
Yeah, call to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting of April 3rd. Jason, would you, will you all please rise? And Jason, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor?
Let us all pray. Dear heavenly Father, we humble ourselves before you this Tuesday as we take care of business for the city of Guthrie. And Lord, how we pray that your Spirit will guide us in wisdom in the decisions that are made here tonight and in the proclamations and all that takes place. We pray that all things that we do will be to honor and glorify that in your name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Andy. Second item on the agenda is a number of, excuse me, a number of proclamations. Specific? The first proclamation that I have is concerning autism. And would the foot family come forward? Right here. Be great. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas autism spectrum disorders are a broad range of conditions characterized by challenges with social skills, repetitive behaviors, and speech and nonverbal communications; and whereas autism spectrum disorders affect nearly one out of 68 children and an unknown number of adults in the United States of all genders, race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic backgrounds; and whereas early, accurate diagnosis and appropriate education, intervention, and support are vital to the well-being of those with autism spectrum disorders; and whereas persons with autism spectrum disorders should have access to care, services, and opportunities they need to be happy and to achieve their greatest potential; whereas the city of Guthrie, Oklahoma, is honored to take part in the annual observance of World Autism Month and World Autism Awareness Day in the hope that it will lead to more research and better understanding and acceptance of autism spectrum disorder. And now there are I, Stephen J. Gentling, Mayor of the city of Guthrie, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as World Autism Month and April 2nd, 2018, as World Autism Awareness Day in the city of Guthrie, Oklahoma, to raise public acceptance and understanding of autism spectrum disorder, as well as to increase knowledge of the efforts that have been made and are being made to support individuals with autism spectrum disorder and their family, dated the 3rd day of August of April 2018. Judge? The second proclamation is the Kids to Parks Day. And the proclamation reads... You want to read this?
No, go ahead. You're doing good, Steve.
The proclamation reads, whereas May 19th, we're getting a little bit ahead, but this is good. It, "May 19th, 2018, is the eighth Kid to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust. And whereas Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks; and whereas it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks because of the decline in park attendance over the last few decades; and whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hypercholesterol; and whereas Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants; and whereas Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors." Now therefore I, Stephen J. Gentling, Mayor of the city of Guthrie, do hereby proclaim May 19th, 2018, as Kids to Parks Day and urge residents of Guthrie to make time on May 19th to take children to their, who live in neighborhoods, to their neighborhood, state, or national park. I had the pleasure of signing this yesterday.
Wonderful.
Good. Thank you. You want any comments?
No.
Good job on that board, Van.
Thank you. A lot of exciting things happened.
I know there is. Very good. Third proclamation. Whereas Americans are the victims of 20 million crimes each year affecting individuals and communities; whereas years of investment in crime victims' rights and services have developed a system of victim response that can help victims recover from crimes; and whereas reaching and serving all victims of crime is essential to supporting thriving communities because those who receive holistic services and support are more likely to remain invested in their communities; whereas dedicated victim service providers are working every day to meet the needs of crime victims, yet there are still too many victims without meaningful access to rights and services; and whereas many victims face barriers such as isolation, distrust of authorities, language limitations, lack of transportation, or cultural barriers that keep them from accessing the services and criminal justice systems that can help them recover from crime; and whereas we must make a dedicated effort to expand the circle of those prepared to respond to victims and link them to the resources that can help them, help them recover. Whereas the city, whereas National Crime Victims' Right Week provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that all victims of crime, especially those who are challenged to reach or to serve, are afforded the rights and receive trauma-informed response; and whereas the city of Guthrie is hereby dedicated to strengthen victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our community and of our victims' responders, and working for justice for all victims and survivors. Now be it therefore resolved that the city council of the city of Guthrie recognizes April 8th through the 14th as Crime Victims' Rights Week, and that this city reaffirms its commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crimes during Crime Victim Week and throughout the year, and to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Chief? The pleasure of signing this today.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good. Are you good? All right, chief. Fourth. We're almost there. This proclamation reads, whereas in 1991 congressional resolution named the second full week in April of every year as National Telecommunicator Week; and whereas emergencies can occur at any time or any place and require the assistance of police, fire, or emergency medical services; and whereas 911 is the lifeline for people in emergency situations and the 911 call taker's voice is the first assurance that help is on its way; and whereas 911 professionals regularly meet the challenge of extremely stressful situations with calmness and efficiency; and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, medical personnel is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property; and whereas the safety of these emergency responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the communication center; and whereas public safety communication officers are everyday superheroes, providing assistance before any other emergency, emergency services arrive on the scene; and whereas public safety communication officers are a vital link for our emergency responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety; and whereas public safety communication officers contribute substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of injuries and illnesses on a daily basis; and whereas each communication officer has exhibited courage, empathy, and professionalism during their performance of his or her daily jobs. Now be it therefore resolved, I, Stephen J. Gentling, the mayor of the city of Guthrie, declare the week of April 8th through the 14th, 2018, to be National Communicator, Telecommunicator Week in honor of the men and women whose compassion, diligence, and professionalism keeps our region's citizens and emergency responders safe. Chief? A great group, a vital group of people.
You all don't know how much I appreciate you.
A vital group of people. Yep. Behind the scenes that do an awful lot for any emergency situation. Congratulate them for, for, from all of us.
I will. Thank you.
Proclamation. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world since trees can reduce the erosion of our topsoil, lowering our heating and cooling costs, cleaning the air, producing oxygen, and creating habitat for wildlife; and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska; and whereas trees provide numerous benefits such as increasing our property values, enhancing the economic vitality of business areas, and beautifying our community, and wherever they are planted, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Be there, be it therefore resolved, I, Stephen J. Gentling, Mayor of the city of Guthrie, in recognition of the upcoming National Arbor Day on April 27th, do hereby acknowledge Arbor Day in Guthrie, America. Do you want to say anything?
Well, everyone may be on the lookout for a poster, the...
Right here.
A poster competition we're hosting. It's like kind of an annual thing. We'll be posting them in a business window on Oklahoma Street in the coming weeks and a few other activities planned with some groups of kids for Arbor Day. We're planning, planting trees at some point, but we haven't picked a date, so.
Very good. Very good. All right. Last one.
Last one?
Thought that was the last one.
Thought that was the last one.
There's an additional one. Proclamation. Whereas it is appropriate for Oklahomans to commemorate the vision and resolution displayed by pioneer men and women who opened our territory to settlement on April 22nd, 1889; and whereas Oklahoma's land run marks the beginning of one of the most dramatic and colorful periods of history in our great state; and whereas it is fitting to reflect on the brave deeds, determination, and faith that guided early settlers as they built a firm foundation for future Oklahomans; and whereas the Oklahoma Legislature has declared that the historic city of Guthrie in Logan County shall be the official city of festivity for the 89ers Celebration Week; and whereas events taking place throughout the week in Guthrie include a parade, rodeo, carnival, and baseball game, as well as concerts, contests, and dances. Now therefore I, Mary Fallon, Governor, do hereby proclaim the week of April 15th, 2018, as 89ers Celebration Week in the state of Oklahoma. Jeff, you want to come down here and accept this? Very good. Very good.
Only officially recognized city in Oklahoma.
Okay. The third item on the agenda is our Consent Agenda Items A and B. A is the approval of the Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting of March 20th, and B is the cancellation of Tuesday, April 17th Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting due to the 89ers Celebration Chuck Wagon Dinner. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes. Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval of Consent Agenda Items A and B. With that, our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting is adjourned, and I call to order our city council meeting of April 3rd. The second item on the agenda is Consent Agendas Items A through E. A is the approval of the city council meeting of March 20th. B is the approval of agreement between the city and SEDEXO operations for the Logan County Aging Services at Highland, Highland Hall. C is the approved authorizing, approval to authorize staff to solicit bids for grass management at the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport. D is to approve a contract between the YMCA to operate the municipal swimming pool for the 2018 season. And E is cancellation of the Tuesday, April 17th city council meeting due to, again, the 89ers Celebration Chuck Wagon Dinner. I'll entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion of those Consent Agenda Items? Submit your votes.
Let's see the votes.
Unanimous approval of Consent Agenda Items A through E. Item number three, discussion and possible action on the Guthrie Code of Ordinance on Noises to include chapters 14, 13, and 23. Staff comments? We discussed it.
I think we covered it very well in our work session that preceded this. We just put it on the agenda in case we had carryover discussion. I think we made good progress. Staff will continue to work on it and look at some options to bring back, and hopefully we can have additional players involved in the next meeting to, to get some further feedback as well.
So no action taken on that, on item number three at this time? Item number four, discussion, possible action to amend Resolution Number 2016-14, which is establishing general policy requirements for the appointment to and continued service for the city of Guthrie boards and commissions. Staff comments?
This was requested by one of the council members. But I would go through some of the things that we might want to look at 2016-14 resolution. Just want to recognize, item one says that to be eligible to be appointed to a city of Guthrie Board or Commission, an individual must be a resident within the corporate limits of the city of Guthrie unless otherwise stated by Oklahoma statute or city of Guthrie ordinance. If we do amend this, I would recommend that we also put in joint agreements with other cities to cover what we did with the airport, and we may want to include resolutions. Right now, there's opportunities for airport, CVB, and historic preservation, of course. There are certain appointments on those boards that do not have to be in the city limits. And then on item two, three, where it says, in order to be eligible, you must be a resident for one year, well, the same exception in one needs to be in two and three because if you don't have to live in the city limits, I think it's strange to say that you have to live here for a year. So we need to do an exception for those that aren't required to live inside the city limits on those, just housekeeping things. And on number five, there's, individuals will be eligible for additional appointments after one full term is expired from the Board or Commission upon which the individual served. Any individual serving on a Board or Commission at the time of resolution is adopted, may serve out that time, and is eligible for two consecutive full terms. Well, when we started that, there were some people in terms, but now we have people serve partial terms. Do we want to add that to it, that if you serve a two-year partial term, you could then go on to serve two full terms? And I would suggest that for consideration. And then I think there are going to be some discussion about term limits, and I sent out a document, just a brief document, on what I saw with some of the disadvantages of the term limits and advantage of term limits for assistance in, in that discussion. So our mind were more housekeeping.
It's not there. Okay? All right? So what I wanted to discuss real quickly, and the reason for putting this, requesting this on the agenda was, I feel that, and again, it's no, this is for this council and future councils as well, I feel that the council comes here together and is elected into this position, and I think that they ought to have a say on who goes on these boards, simple as that. And I want to put a motion together, and I don't know how it's going to be done, Randall, that's up to you, on the everything, every board and commission is appointed by this council and brought forward by this council and nominated by this council, not just the mayor. I know there's one conflicting potential, which is within the state statutes of Oklahoma through Title 11, there's one area of, which is the Planning Commission, which specifically states that it's to be, you know, nominated by the mayor. Well, it also has a major conflict in there, whereas we could put together a zoning commission that is appointed by the commissioner, right here, that is appointed by us. And in that case, we could convert that over to the Planning Commission and make that the Planning Commission. There's also some caveats within the state statutes that allow you to go in and, when there's governance conflict, you can go in and, you can either govern by state statute or you can govern by ordinance, but you have to govern by the one that has the most teeth in it, is the stronger of the two, period. And so my position is, I think it's a lot stronger for this council to nominate people to these boards than one person. I think it's more responsible and definitely has more teeth in it when the whole council nominates those people and brings them forward than one person. Okay. Are you done? Got a lot more for that. Well, of course, as we all know, in, in most instances, not all instances, because there's clearly, I think the CVB, as well as maybe...
Rates and fees.
Rates and fees are nominated by the individual council representative from, from that ward. But, and as we all know, the way the process has been working for a number of years predating all of us on this board, on this council, the nomination has been made on most of the other positions, nomination is made by the mayor, but the vote is by the whole council. So the whole council is the one that is endorsing that nomination. And, and as we have done, there have been times when the nomination by the mayor has not been, has not been approved by the council. And so the council's vote and voice has been heard.
Yep.
And I, I understand what you're saying, Brian, but I think the whole council is engaged with the nomination. The council sees the, the application of the individuals that are being nominated, and so they have an opportunity, they clearly have an opportunity to have that discussion, to have input to the mayor, in this case, myself, for individuals that are, that are applying. And so I, I see that opportunity for input is clearly there, and the opportunity to agree or disagree with the nomination is also there. I don't, I, I don't understand, I, I am having trouble visualizing how the logistics of having every, all, all the members of the council nominate a position, a person for, for each position? Is that what you're recommending?
Yeah, no. Let, let me interject real quick.
Okay.
First off, I want to throw something out because you're right. The mayor has been doing this, and it's been done incorrect.
Well, I don't know.
For a lot of years.
I don't know it's been, been incorrect.
Well, it's not by...
It's been, it's been done as you don't agree with.
It's not by statute, and it's not by charter. Okay? And you're going to have to show me where it is because it's not.
It's in our ordinances.
It's not by statute or charter. Okay? That's just a fact.
It's in our ordinance. Is it not in our ordinances?
State, not that I've found.
Oh, I can show you where it's in our...
All right. Well, again, it's not, I, I operate on our charter. That's what I do. Okay? That ties back to the ordinances, and nowhere in the charter does it say this. Okay? And nowhere in the state statutes does it say this, except with one condition, and that's planning, which the council could take over and form a zoning commission and turn it to planning.
I think maybe historical preservation is also in that.
It's not. I've been through them all. And I think Leroy has been through them as well. But let me go, let me back up to your deal. Let's say that we have a, we've got two positions on planning right now. Okay? What could happen is, for example, Jeff, Cheryl, and Ed could make a decision, they're all from different wards, they're all from, they represent all three wards, and they could make a decision on planning. Okay? Me, Case, and Smedley could make a decision on planning and bring that, and through those candidates and bring them forward, just like Jeff and I did with CVB. It's not that difficult. If we can do it with two, we can do it with six. Okay? So I don't find where you have a problem letting that go. I'm, I'm confused on why you can't release that, especially when it's not in state statute anywhere. And if we're going to follow state statute, we have to follow it on everything. You can't follow a state statute on one item and not follow it on the others.
Okay. So we have one position on, let's just pick one, library board.
Library.
So how is that going to play out with the council? How, who will do the nomination?
Well, I think that's a matter of how many are on library board? How many, who, and from what ward are they? Maybe it's not ward-centric whatsoever. Okay? At that point, it'd have to be a volunteer, I don't want the whole council to do it, that's not the goal. I think half of the council can go out and do it, and that half a council can be, maybe the mayor puts those, maybe that's something that the mayor does. Maybe he says, okay, Bothroyd, Case, and, and Wood, we need the library position filled. Maybe that's what happens.
Well, I think...
There's no, I don't think it's that difficult to come up with a process. That's the simplest thing to do, is come up with a process.
I don't think so. I think that's, I think the devil's in the details of, you know...
Bring it out. Say it. Throw it out there.
Well, I, I think that we're really, I, I think our process is going, is going to be a lot more convoluted, Brian, I think. You know...
Why? Why?
Well, because I, I, I think who, you say, maybe the mayor should, would select yourself and, and Case.
Bring in the council, three, three, three representations from a ward, whoever made it last time, the next three make it next time. Simple as that.
So it would be, so it would be ward-specific?
It doesn't have to be ward-specific, but I think that all three wards should be involved in appointing anybody. Okay? And bringing them forward. I, this thing about the mayor appointing them, Steve, I've had this problem since the day I got on council. This is one of my biggest pet peeves. It may not be anybody else's. So I'm suggesting we put it together and put it to a vote.
See, the...
And let's see what it comes...
See, all the wards are involved because all the wards vote for the nomination.
I, again, for the sake of argument, I say we put it together and we put it to the vote and let this council make the decision.
Well, I don't think you have a specific, a specific thing to, to ask the council to vote on today. I think...
Well, I think that I do.
I, I think that, I think that the process, Brian, has to be more defined for us, or I'm afraid we're going to get into...
Hey, we've got board seats open right now. We've got people that haven't been presented to us. Okay? I can mention, we're not going to drag that through the mud right now, but there are people that have not been put forward in the past that you've seen.
Yes.
Okay? And that's just not right. And it needs to change. It needs to change for this... It needs to change for this council, and it needs to change for future councils. We're not going to be here all the time. We're going to be moving on at one point. We all hope to do the best we can do for our community and for the future people that come here and get on council. And the way it's set right now, it's not. Okay? It's almost to the ridiculous point in some cases.
Well, it's not ridiculous at all. A nomination is, is made, and everybody can see the, the application, and then you vote on it. And that's certainly not, that's certainly not-
If we see the application. If we see it.
It's attached, it's attached to the agenda.
Okay.
It's attached to the agenda.
I think the process Brian is talking about would give us more transparency, and I think-
A lot.
Yes.
I think if we were to make a motion, it would be that the ordinance, we would instate an ordinance then that says, left side of this round table goes, then the right side goes. And just alternates.
It's not that difficult. It's not that difficult to get together.
So what, what you heard was that every other appointment is done by either the left side here or the right side?
No, that's not true. That's not-
Well, I'm just saying, I asked him what he heard.
The nomination would be, so we'd get together as a subcommittee and look at the-
You three, and, and look at all the applicants for-
Whatever.
In the case I was showing as the library board.
And I agree. And that would be the thing, so that we all see the applications. We all have a chance to see it before it gets put on the agenda.
And then we make a recommendation to council, and then council has to vote it in, just like they do right now. The difference is, one person's not making that call, period. No one person will ever make that call.
So if I understand what you're trying to say, you're saying that your motion would read that all commission, all commission vacancies will be, will be nominated by council member?
Correct.
That, that's got to have some exceptions to it, because I'm not convinced on Brian's argument, particularly with the Planning Commission's concern. My belief is, the way I understand the statute, that the Planning Commission, and I'm just talking, that body alone is a statutory creation, and, and that statute says, the mayor points and council confirms.
Right.
Now, that's just that one commission. It's not-
Out of all of them, only one.
I thought historic preservation too, but I could be wrong.
I haven't read the history.
But, there's conflict there. And whenever there's conflict in governance, the state statutes come back to that you have to rely on which is stronger.
We had that discussion earlier, and I'll research that, that I'm not willing to accept your position.
No, I understand that. I'm not asking you to accept it.
On that board.
Right. And it can be, like, we can make a motion and handle this thing, with the exception of planning, and come back to planning at a later date. Okay? And we can come back to planning at a later date. And I think you're going to find that when there's conflict in governance, it comes down to the strongest ordinance, whether it's statute or ordinance.
Well, unless the statute preempts it.
Preempts it, yeah.
It never does, from what I've read.
The state statute, the state statute would preempt it.
There are, the doctrine of preemption is pretty well-founded doctrine, so, but it just depends, I don't know whether it's happened in this case or not, but-
It may, it may not.
So we can just add, unless contrary to state law, to the end of what my motion suggestion was, and we've taken care of what we're talking about.
And, and we don't have to include planning into it. We can use that for another council meeting. And we can, once, once Randall researches that, along with everything else he has to research from our agriculture, zoning, and everything else that we're supposed to have on the agenda that's still not there, then we can come back to that.
So, Councilman Case-
But I can put my time in, after hours, if I think this side of the table could as well, to make these type decisions. It doesn't have to be done at a council meeting. We can go to the second room, or the third room meeting room, go through the applications, and come back with a candidate. We can talk on the phone and discuss the candidates and come up that way as well.
As long as four of you aren't doing it.
As long as four of us aren't doing it.
At the same time.
At the same time. Within a quorum scenario. That's all, that's all I got.
Okay. So, your proposal is to have three members, either appointed by the, by the mayor, or just arbitrarily use the left and right side of the diocese here?
Well, that's something, that's something that Jason came up with, which is, is a sound practice, because there happens to be three wards representing the city on this side and three wards representing that side. If it wasn't set up that way, why is it structured like this at this table?
Yeah. Yeah. I, I don't know. I didn't set up the table.
Yeah, well, because it's ward, it's three-
I, I think it makes sense that there not be two members from the same board. I think there's some, some logic to that.
I've also got another question. Are there boards and commissions, that there are seven members in the resolution establishing that board or commission specifically says each council shall appoint a-
That was the next-
There is, the, there is, Board of, Rates, Rates and Fees.
CBB is a joint deal from me and Jeff in this particular scenario.
CVB is, is a representative from each, or each ward grouping nominates one individual, and then four at large from the mayor.
And really, all the boards should be that way.
Our recent ADA committee, each commissioner nominating-
And it should be that way on all boards, it's just not, that would make it real simple.
Yeah.
But it's just not.
Do we have boards that are more than, more or less than seven members?
Library, I think, is seven. I think that might be, I think seven is the largest.
So why wouldn't we?
I think, I think, I'm not, like, uh-
Well, I really don't necessarily feel that the applicants need to be ward-specific, or the commissioners need to pick from their particular ward. I think it needs to be picked from the city hall.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I agree. I agree. And I, and, other than, I think there is one of the boards where they're, where the representatives are asked to come from that particular ward.
Yes, and that is the Rates and Fees.
But I think seven is the largest that we have. Seven is the largest that we have.
It could be the standard for all of our commissions.
Could be. Should be.
Possibly.
I mean, if it says a minimum of five, we can still have seven on there. If it specifies five members and only five members, now we've got a change we've got to make. But otherwise, you know, if it says a minimum of five members, then you could have seven on there, and it would meet that-
So, so where you're, where you're moving towards, I guess, is that if there were seven on every board or commission, that each, each council person would have a nomination slot?
Right.
Now, his or her nomination may only come up once every three years.
Right.
But, but that's what it would be.
Right.
And so that it worked like rates and fees. The committee of three would be better, actually, instead of each council member doing this, because it, that way we do have a committee looking at it and not just picking certain people out.
I like the committee of three scenario, because you could have-
Because there are going to, it's what differences make, whether there's seven people on a board or five people on a board. It just depends on what that board has written and what its bylaws are, or how the ordinance is written for that particular ordinance, or that particular board or commission. I think that it does give us more transparency if we do have the commission, committee, and it doesn't necessarily have to be right or left side of the room. It could be just-
One from each board.
State committee, and a finance committee.
Two separate committees.
Two separate committees right now, made of council members and finance. One from each board.
So, I mean, it's the same thing, so, but I think that just the committee of three is, is the best way to go and the least, least cumbersome.
Well, what if, what if we, what if we, if we're moving towards the number of seven, but, but even, even at that, the minimum that we have is five, on our smallest one. What if we, what if we went with, with three at large nominated by the mayor, and the others nominated by the-
Why do we have, why does the mayor have to have such power in nomination?
Because you've just cut me out of the others.
I didn't cut you out of the others.
Yes, three.
Three.
We, we can't do more than three without having four.
Right. We can't do more than three without four.
I just said, I just said you cut me out.
I think, I think that may be a good compromise, Brian.
But I think that you're going to end up with planning at the end of the day, is what it's going to look like, potentially, maybe, maybe not.
Well, as I read the statute, the planning, I think, is one that we don't have authority to, to change. But, but there's a lot of other ones. And I'm just suggesting that, that, that a compromised position would be to at least let the mayor have some nominations in this process.
Yeah.
Since you've just cut the mayor out with the suggestion of having three and three.
Well, if we bring the mayor in, obviously, with the three and three, then we're in a quorum scenario.
Right, so we can't.
So all that, yes, we can. All that takes is posting an agenda on the thing two days before we meet. That's a simple little piece of paper. Four people are going to be meeting in the conference room on floor three, and it's done. And the mayor can be involved in all of them, with, with the groups.
Or the mayor gives his, well, the-
Anybody can be involved with all of them, because then it becomes, because then it becomes an open meeting.
Right.
So anybody can be involved.
As far as the three people from, you know, right or left, looking at applications, mayor's looking at applications too. Mayor has recommendations. The three have recommendations, we all get together. Once the three have talked, somebody from whoever, one of the three, and the mayor get together and discuss, okay, this is what we have, it can go back and forth. That way we come up with the best person of the job. It doesn't, I mean, that does not cut you out at all. It keeps you right in the middle of it.
The only time it cuts you out is when you don't agree. Obviously, if three people agree with one person, for example, and you're adamant that you don't agree, it goes to a vote of the council.
Well, it has to go to, for a vote of the council anyway.
Correct. I understand that. That, that's the only time-
That's, that's the last step that we, that we all have to agree on.
Yeah.
So, that, that's there.
And I don't have a problem, I'm sorry, let me interrupt you. I don't have a problem if you have a nomination. As long as everybody else has one too, then that's-
The seven thing is one thing. That's the easiest way around it. The problem with that, or the conundrum, so to speak, is that we always can't get people to fill these boards. And so we may be sitting here, you know, with empty slots, because we increased it to seven.
Well, you don't get a quorum, is the problem.
Yeah, and then you don't have a quorum on a board, so the board gets stagnated, and that could be an issue. That's all.
Right.
But, with the, a whole council involved in it, maybe you do get more candidates, because maybe the council's now talking to people. Maybe I'm talking to my neighbor now, who is, you know, because I got to fill a board position.
Well, I would sure hope that the council is talking to people anyway.
Yeah, well-
I mean, I would sure hope that that-
They are, but I'm talking about in, in an aggressive pursuit to fill the deal, instead of just mentioning, okay, we have, you know, four, we have four positions open, two on planning and two on HB during council. That's all I ever hear.
Well, that, that, and I'm the one that says it.
Right. No, I understand. I give you credit on that.
But, all of it, all of us need to be recruiting representatives from our citizens to be on all of these boards and commissions, regardless of who's doing the nomination, because they all represent, they represent our community, which is what we're all here for.
And I was on that with the airport board, just in the last two weeks, ten days.
Yeah.
I would point out, on the forestry advisory board, there's seven members, and two of those are appointed by the city manager.
Oh, well, that's not good.
Well, we get rid of that. Again, that's-
You can cut me out.
Shut him out.
Just don't take my paycheck.
So, I, I'm, I haven't heard other discussion from this side too much. Jeff, Cheryl?
I'm just listening in.
Okay.
I like the idea. I think it'd be a good idea.
You like the idea of what?
Brian's idea of going down the road like that. Maybe us getting involved in this a little bit more. Yeah. In other words, us speak up and say something. Because we don't, I know what it's been before, I know the other mayor's done it, and I've been to several other council meetings where they've appointed things, but I, I've heard people ask, you know, why do they, why does the mayor pick? I said, I said, I guess it's just because we've been doing it all this time.
Yeah, I think we inherited the system.
Right.
And, and, and I don't think, I don't think that the system has been operating too badly. I think that the nominations, individuals that have been, have been voted on by the council to represent the citizens on boards and commissions has been successful. I think we've selected good people for those positions. I, I understand, Brian, what you're saying is that, why should, why should all, why should the nomination just come from one person primarily?
I sat here in a meeting one time, and you put a nomination forward, it didn't get moved or seconded.
Right.
Jeff Taylor wanted to nominate someone, and you said, can't do it. It's not your response, or, or actually, you just shut him right down.
No, I said, it can't be done, because it's not on the agenda.
No, it's mine, no, you said, here's what you said, my nomination.
No, I didn't say that, Ron.
Yes, you did.
I said, it's not, I said, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay.
But, it's, if it wasn't, if the name wasn't on the agenda, it couldn't be voted on.
The name was on the agenda. Okay? It was on the agenda.
Yeah, but if the name was not on the agenda, then-
It was on the agenda.
The only, the only names that goes on the agenda are the ones that are nominated.
Well, it was on there as far as, at that point, it was on there as far as their application.
Never done. Never done.
Okay.
Never put all applications on there.
Okay. Well, I'll go back and show you the take me-
Okay, you do that. Yes.
It was on there one time.
It was James Long is who it was.
And after that, we no longer put all of the names on there, only the ones that you nominated. So it did happen one time, I remember.
Exactly.
Okay. I stand corrected.
But, my point, I do want to say, the only thing that bothers me in the way it's done now, is the fact that there may be some really good candidates that have applied. And we don't get the opportunity to look at those and choose from the candidate pool. We only get to vote or confirm the ones that you've nominated, and there is no other choice. And a lot of times, especially those of us that have been here for 152 years, see, we know some of the people perhaps a little better in their intent than someone who's not been a lifetime member. That might not play into it, but at some point in time, it could. And so I don't feel like it's fair at this point.
Okay. So, let me, let me understand. If there are three applicants for a position, does the council not see all three?
We aren't given all of those.
No.
Only when you appoint them, we only see the nomination.
Oh, well, I, I think we have, that needs to be, regardless of what the process changes.
I think during my tenure, we put on the, we've, on our staff reports, and since my tenure, we list all the applicants. We put who you nominate, we put all the applications in there we're aware of.
But, we only can vote on the ones he's nominated.
That's correct.
That's correct.
We cannot vote on any of those that have applied.
Yeah, you're correct. But during my tenure, they have all been in the packet.
Yes. Okay.
And, and, I mean, we've all been equally elected. This is not a mayor's strong form of government here.
Right.
This is council's strong.
So, so, Brian, in the scenario that you're proposing, you three come up with a, there are, let's say there are four candidates, and you three come up with the candidate that you want to nominate. And that's the nomination that goes on the agenda.
No, maybe, yeah, well, maybe what hap, well, first off, you have to look at the pool of applicants that come into city hall, obviously. obviously.
There's four.
Okay? And so say there's four applicants. We go down, we sit down and we look at the four applicants and we decide between us, I may not agree, but these two might overrule. And then we say, okay, well, this is the one we're gonna put forward. And then we bring it forward and the council has to vote on it.
Right. All... The whole council will see all four candidates in this scenario.
Correct.
But we're back to Cheryl's comment of it's still the one name that's going forward that gets voted on that day.
Right.
But there was three wards involved in making that call, not just one mayor.
And the mayor is involved too because you're looking at those applicants too. It's just not in the same venue as the three.
And these three can look at them too, just like we look at city manager.
Well, they all will.
We can all look at them.
They all will. And as I'm understanding what Leroy is saying, we all... Everybody now recently has been getting all of the applications.
That's true. We almost need to view the applicants one period prior to the voting time because if the nominations are placed on the agenda and there are six applicants, we still can't do anything about the applicants that aren't nominated, period.
I don't know that it's your intent to place all six applicants on the agenda. I mean, you all have...
No.
Or for us to even see.
And all you need to vote on is the one that somebody...
You don't want... We don't want to have to... The goal is not to drag applicants through the mill on this table here. That will never happen.
Right.
We don't want to drag applicants publicly through this.
Clearly, that... We want to encourage more applicants.
Exactly.
And so I'm wondering, my sense is, again, the devil in the detail a little bit here because I'm sensing that there's still a concern that it's only gonna be the name that's nominated by either you three plus the mayor or you three plus the mayor. And there might be, if there's four applicants, there might be somebody else that somebody else feels strongly about. Well, then they can vote against that nomination.
Well, they can vote against that nomination.
At that time anyways, it can happen at the time of voting anyways.
I mean, it's still not...
So I think we need... I think we need to flesh this out a little bit more. I mean, I don't think that we are ready to vote on a alternative process.
Well, I think we are. I think we can come up with the details. Devil's in the details, Steve.
But my issue is you've got a... And this may not be an issue. I'm just thinking out loud now. You've got three... You've got a nominating committee of three people. And now you're bringing the mayor in, so it's gonna be an open meeting if you do that. We're gonna have to notice it 48 hours before the meeting. And this becomes then the perception problem. If all four of you agree on that at the meeting, what's the point of even bringing it to the council?
How is it... Well, I don't see it being an open meeting when they're all being vetted separately. It's just that the mayor's... It wouldn't be an open meeting because it would just be the three or the right or the left of the shoe, horseshoe.
I'm involved.
Steve's gonna have... You're gonna have all the candidates.
But you're involved, but not in the same meeting. You're not with the guys.
Yeah, I am.
You're not gonna be in the meeting with them.
Yeah, I am.
Well, then, no.
Now, we've already nixed that, Steve. We already said that we don't want to have an open meeting, okay?
Well, then I go back to my point that you have effectively... You have effectively cut me out of the process.
No, you're still vetting them yourself, but it becomes once the... Either the right or left comes up with an idea or looks at it, then you would discuss it with one person.
Let's address Steve's thing about cutting you out because I hear you...
And I didn't mean saying me. You're cutting out the mayor.
What you're saying is you're cut... We're cutting out the mayor, but what the mayor wants to do is hold on to it so that we're... That six of us are cut out.
Not necessarily.
Yes, necessarily. That's just a fact. That's what I'm hearing.
What if we do a rotation of three?
And you could do the rotation too.
Well, where the mayor has a spot on either one of the boards every three times.
Yeah, it doesn't always have to be the three ward members for that matter.
And that's what I was gonna suggest, the potential, if you want to do three, is take the seven and start a list and the top three go the first time and then you just rotate.
It'd just be a rotation?
A rotation deal.
Rotation? I could... I could live with that.
Okay.
You don't want to cut the mayor out at all. It's just trying to make it so that...
Well, yeah, you did.
No. It's try... No, I didn't.
Let's make that motion.
Has somebody been taking some notes on the...
I think I could put together what it would be.
Kim has a full notepad over by her right now.
Poor Kim.
But clearly, one of the things is that all applicants are seen by all members of the council.
Correct. Yes. And not one member, period, puts them forward.
Correct.
Like that's happening now and it's been happening forever.
Not at all.
And so the motion could read that council now, through three members of council, including mayor, rotationally are to pick the candidates for the boards and put them forward to council for a vote.
Before you do that, this is published to amend the resolution, which is the one that Leroy said we need to do some things to as part of this whole process, I think. So would it be better that we bring back a clean amended resolution that says all this stuff so we're not guessing tonight?
Yes, it would.
Yes.
Yes.
Because we've got a number of things. We need to deal with the partial terms. We need to clean up the exception of people who live outside the city limits.
Right. Let's bring it back.
And then after staff visits with the attorney, it may be clean up this resolution, but since we're amending an ordinance as to change the way they're nominated, we may have to do that by ordinance.
Yeah. If we're amending... I mean, if it changes the makeup of a board or something that's in the... And the board was set up by ordinance, not resolution, we're definitely gonna have to change the ordinance.
Well, and then that'll give you an opportunity to look at the state statute on the planning and all that too. And then maybe that gets thrown in the fray. Maybe it doesn't at the end of the day. I think it will.
Depending on how that is resolved legally, the exception of unless state statute says otherwise is gonna trump all of this. So if there's a statute that says a board, historic board or planning commission, if there's a statute, then that's gonna trump.
And just about all of them are by ordinance. There's only two that are by resolution. So at least according to my notes.
Well, that's the one thing, yeah. That's the one thing I want you to look at because I saw some things in the state statutes and I'm not an attorney that looked like they did allow for flexibility in that area. That's all.
Okay. So I guess the... Do we need a motion to have staff incorporate the changes that the city manager discussed as well as the philosophical approach?
Yeah, I think... I think we really don't need to take any action on this item tonight, understanding that we'll be back at the next meeting with a total new resolution.
So we can read what has been changed and see how it's been changed.
And look at it before the meeting.
And I would just like to throw out just a couple things for discussion of the staff when they're putting it together. Does it change the rotation if, for instance, there's two planning board vacancies? Is this the rotation gonna be... And let's just say there's one library board. Does the rotation go from planning to library and then back to planning? Or does the rotation... Does that group have the nomination for two members of the same boards or commission? I guess I was just trying to see how we get as much broadness, I guess, in the nomination process.
I'm guessing unless y'all tell us otherwise, you'll rotate for every single nomination.
You'll rotate, take for every nomination.
Nomination or application.
One problem I have with the rotation idea is that I think every ward should be represented on all of our committees, all of them. There should be a member from every ward on... If it's a member... If there's three members on the committee, then there'll be one from Ward one, Ward two, Ward three. If there's five, you've got to at least have one from each ward. So that may change the way that... Because it needs to be citywide.
It is citywide, but it may...
If they all come from out by the lake or if they all come from over here in the Meadow Lake area, you're not getting...
Jim, I understand the desire and in a perfect world, that would happen. The reality is that we have a challenge of getting candidates for some of our boards.
But we each have a charge to come up with one.
But when's the last time you made a decision for Ward one only? Never. You always make a decision.
I do represent the city, but I was put here by my ward.
I understand.
And that's why I want them to have a representation.
To represent the city. I understand and they're gonna be represented.
See, I strongly feel that we ought to put the best person on the board or commission regardless of what ward they're from.
I agree.
The best person is who I think we ought to place on the board.
But I do hear Jim's scenario as well. He could have, if every board... If every member had a... If every board had seven members, then you could put someone from Ward three if you wanted. Doesn't have to necessarily be from Ward one because again, this whole ward thing is just for vote, okay? Because at the end of the day, we all represent the city. I've got people from Ward one that call me and Ward three that call me and I work for them just as much as Ward two. Okay? I try to push them to you.
Well, I... You know, I just think that we ought to be dealing with the best person for that role.
I agree. That's what I'm saying.
For that role. Okay, so... Is it... Are we at a no action taken at this time on item number four? No action taken at this time, item number four. We will continue that dialogue at a future council meeting.
Well, we'll continue that dialogue at the next council meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay.
May.
May.
The item number five, discussion, possible action to purchase two Ford Explorers from John Vance staff.
Well, you're all a little testy tonight. I'm kind of intimidated. But I'll do the best I can. Right now, we have a pool car that's a 2002 Ford Explorer that's a pool vehicle, 16 years old. It's at the point it's not reliable for out of town travel. We are proposing to buy two 2008 Ford Explorers. One of them would be primarily used as a pool vehicle. The other one would be primarily shared by the planning director and economic development director. It would not be a take home car. The pool vehicle is used by multiple departments and various degrees for staff to attend out of town continuing education, conferences, meetings. So there are times police department dispatchers go to training. Sometimes there's officers that don't have assigned vehicles to go to training. There are times it's used by the fire department. It's used by staff of public works, people in water and sewer, parks, streets. They all have different continuing education they have to do. City clerk's office, code enforcement officers and our building code officer, their vehicles are good in town, but when they go very far out of town for training, they use the pool vehicle, the library and the airport. When you use the pool vehicle for all of those, if you just buy one vehicle, then it doesn't leave much time to share it with the tourism director, the planning director and our grant writer and then our economic development. So is there enough vehicle time to cover all those needs is why we looked at doing two vehicles. And again, this is not an exhaustive list, but what I'm gonna give you is a list of that I came up with. Full time tourism director, that's a new position for the city because the CBB used to be with the Chamber of Commerce. City took it over. We decided that tourism is a major industry for us, so we made that a full time position. Our tourism director, of course, goes out to the Laze E to work with them. She attends regional tourism conferences. She attends trade shows or events to promote Guthrie. I would throw out, maybe I can get testy like you all. I don't think you can develop Guthrie's tourism setting in Guthrie. City planner, directive economic development used to be a combined position. We found that that didn't work. That's too much for one position to handle and do it a good job. Well, the city planner, and again, this is not an exhaustive list because I just tried to come up with this afternoon, but ACOG meetings, outdoor tourism and recreation department meetings, continuing ed and training, in town field work, when somebody makes a zoning application to rezone or a special use permit. If there's a subdivision plat involved, a variance application, the city planner has to go out and actually see those on the site. You can't do that from City Hall. Economic developer, Oklahoma Department of Commerce meetings, meetings with the Oklahoma City Chamber Economic Development Partnership, which is the entity we get most of our industrial leads from, retail trade shows, meetings with ACOG, again, continuing education and training, in town field work, development of data on available sites that we're gonna promote to retail and industry, touring the community with retail industrial prospects. I would suggest that tourism, grant writing and economic development are all activities that are heavily dependent on building relationships and networking. Respectfully, I'd suggest that staff needs the tools to be successful. And do you want us to be aggressive and make things happen or virtually set at City Hall and wait for something to stumble off the highway? There's other towns out there that's very competitive and they're going to meetings and they're networking and they're building relationships with retailers and industries. If we want to be competitive, we gotta do the same thing. If we don't purchase the cars for our people, then the other thing would be to do mileage reimbursement, then you get into tax issues. It may vary on the model of car. There may be times it's more appropriate to have Ford Expedition and that person drives an economy car or has an older car. That may not be the image that we want to take someone around town in. So, you know, staff will take what we're provided and make it work, but I just feel given the number of times the pool car used and then the additional demand of the tourism director, our city planner and grant writer and then the third one, the economic developer, there's a need for two good vehicles for that multiple use.
I'll entertain a motion to move forward with the purchase of the two Ford Explorers.
Wait, well, I'd like to discuss this for a minute.
The discussion comes.
Okay. And because Leroy and I talked about this. And first, Leroy, I think you do a great job. I think you're perfect for this town. And the one thing I did want to see is, you know, we got these on a five year deal. Okay, so let's look at the last five years of mileage reimbursement. What'd that come to? And then let's add 25% to it because we're gonna push people out to work harder. Okay, so we're gonna add to that. And so what is that number? Is that number close to the 55,000? If it is, I'm all over it. If that number's four grand, I'm not. And that's just me personally. That's the way I make decisions. I look at it. And I'm with you, Leroy. I think that we need our people out there. I'm sure that Edmund and Oklahoma City and everybody else, we've seen the cars, you know, they have their deal out there. But again, what's been the mileage reimbursement over a course of five year timeframe?
I will point out, and I didn't have time to put that together this afternoon and we can piece some of that together, but the way we keep our records, to go pull that out of all the mileage reimbursements we've done over the last five year will not be an easy chore.
No, it'd be...
The other thing I would point out is there had been a lot of miles driven by employees that there was no reimbursement. They drove their personal vehicle and there's really no way to account for that.
And I'll give you that too.
I'll entertain a motion to move forward with...
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
Well, I just wanted to say that I think we put our best foot forward when we do this. You address for success and I think this is a really good idea.
Any other discussion? All right, submit your votes.
Well, I'm gonna have to just go that route since I don't have the data.
By a vote of six to one, the motion carries to move forward with the purchase of those two Ford Explorers. Item number six, discussion, possible action to confirmation of the mayor's nomination of Rene Spinato, Chris Bryant to the planning commission for a three year term expiring in March of 2021.
And if I could explain something, there was an application from a former planning commission member, Doug Powell, and it was not in your applica... or in your packet because there was a misunderstanding. Mr. Powell thought that he applied a year ago, that he didn't have to come in and refresh his application and update it. He has done that, but he did it today, so it was not in your packet. So I just wanted to explain that, that we have visited Mr. Powell and indicated that in the future, when there are openings, we encourage him to apply, but he just needs to refresh his application and make sure he lets us know that all the information's still up to date and he's interested.
There's not a continuation for extended periods of time.
No, I think we made it clear in the process, and we apologized to him that, that maybe we weren't more active with him to make sure he knew that.
Okay, all right, very good. Uh, so the two nominations on the board, you want to handle them separately?
As I think, Mayor, they should be voted on separately.
Okay. Nomination for Rene Spinato, uh, for the planning commission, she's, uh, an existing member, uh, her term expires, I think, at the end of this month, uh, and, um, I'm nominating her for a three year term.
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Submit your votes, please. Let's see the votes. By a vote of four to three, Rene Spinato is confirmed as a, a planning board member for a three year term. Nomination of Chris Bryant, uh, for a three year term, uh, Chris is a new applicant, uh, filling a vacancy of a resignation, um, and, um, I interviewed, uh, Chris, he's, um, relatively new to Guthrie, uh, he's been actively involved with, uh, neighborhood associations in, uh, Oklahoma City, as well as, I believe, Edmund, uh, he, uh, he took the initiative to read our comprehensive plan, uh, had comments about it, uh, is, uh, has initiated a, um, a Facebook, uh, group page called Strong Guthrie City, uh, which is a, a positive, uh, I think, in indication of not only his initiative, but also desire to, um, to gain insight, input, uh, from individuals throughout our, our community. Uh, I felt he was a, a strong applicant, and, uh, have made that nomination, uh, to all of you. I'll entertain a motion. Having heard no motion, uh, that action on, uh, Mr. Bryant will, um, will be, is it suspended, is the right word?
Yeah, normally you make a motion, and they affirm it, and they vote, if nobody wants, uh, to vote for him, they would vote against that.
It, it, well, either that or it failed for lack of a motion.
Fails. Yeah, that'd be the easiest way.
Okay, the, the nomination of, uh, Mr. Chris Bryant, uh, to the planning commission for a three year term fails for lack of a motion. Item number seven, city manager report.
I have no additional reports for tonight.
Okay, all right. Item number eight, uh, comments from members of the city council. Councilwoman Paget.
I apologize to everybody for my coughing, it's allergies, other than that, I have no further comment, thank you.
Councilwoman Taylor?
I agree with her, it's, these allergies are driving me up the wall. Don't forget, we've got 89ers coming up, uh, April 21st, will be the parade, uh, if we, this will be 89 years, so everybody needs to come out and, and support our parade, and, and support our vendors that'll be here. I'll let you say anything else, Mayor, if you want to. Other than that, uh, thank you, staff, appreciate all y'all's hard work.
Councilman Wood?
Uh, thank you all for being here, thank you, staff, and for everything, it was a good conversation tonight. I would like to remind everybody that coming up April 14th is the Bow Wow Lual for the benefit Fogas. They have spent over $15,000 in the last month since, uh, we don't have a animal control officer, and they've been taking on the, uh, the role of collecting and, uh, helping out all stray animals in the city limits, again, that's just in the city limits of Guthrie. So please, the Bow Wow Lual will be at 105 West Oklahoma on April 14th, it's 6:00 P M, tickets are $10 to get in, and that benefits for all the spay and neutering and taking care of all these stray animals and abandoned animals that we have in the city. So please come by and support Von and Fogas for that, uh, please give her a call, or any Fogas member, uh, but Von's number is 659-6672. Thank you.
And if I could just add, from staff's perspective, um, we are appreciative of Fogas and them stepping up their efforts, uh, during the time that we were looking for replacement staff at the animal control shelter, and appreciate them, uh, spending their money, um, and, uh, stepping up their efforts.
Okay, okay. Councilman Smithley?
Uh, thank you, staff, thank you, council, and special thanks to everybody that comes out to watch our meetings, they're very interesting.
Councilman Buthright?
Uh, I have nothing tonight.
Councilman Case?
I think we had a, a really good conversation tonight, and there were some good ideas passed around, and, and, uh, want to commend those that came up with those ideas, that, that you're thinking, that's great. Also, would like to, uh, Ed, what was the lady's name?
Von, Von Copern.
Von Copern is the one that's, that's done that, that's fantastic, and I really hope that we do find, I know that the city, the citizens are really, that, that really concerns them, we don't have any, anybody in the dog pound, so I hope, I hope.
We do have a full time person now.
We do?
That's what I was.
That's fabulous, that's fabulous.
We're looking for a second one.
Good, it's great, great.
Finally, good.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, and, and just, uh, kind of following up on some of our conversations on boards and commissions, we've got vacancies in forestry, uh, library, C V B, historic preservation, uh, and still one in, uh, in planning. Also would like to congratulate the Logan County Health Department, uh, they received a five year full accreditation, uh, by the, uh, by the state, uh, and, uh, that, uh, that means a lot, uh, for the health of our community, as well as, uh, as well as our, uh, our county. Uh, also, we have got, uh, the annual trash off, uh, is this weekend, I believe, where, uh, the convenience center is open for, um, some, some things that normally.
Friday and Saturday.
Don't get thrown away, um, Friday and Saturday, I think, from nine to, to 4:30, and eight to 4:30 on, on Saturday, I believe. And, um, I'd like, like to just give a shout out to the, uh, the staff at the library. Uh, they, um, set up a program, uh, with the, with the city leadership, uh, to handle the, the kids, the, the students of, uh, of, uh, city employees that were impacted by the walkout, uh, yesterday, uh, today, uh, yesterday and today, uh, and, um, and maybe for a few more days. Uh, but they put together a really great program, uh, to educate, as well as entertain, uh, these kids of parents, city employees that had no place else for those children to go, so I salute them for stepping forward, making that happen, uh, and, uh, and appreciate the city leadership, uh, in, uh, in supporting that, and, uh, in bringing it to, to people's attention, so congratulations to the library staff. Great job.
Mr. Mayor?
There's the details on the trash days.
I'm sorry, I just got a text from Sue DeCharm with Neighborhood Solutions, saying that they have trash bags, gloves, and T-shirts for people that want to, um, dawn a T-shirt and throw away trash for Neighborhood Solutions.
Okay, so if you go to Neighborhood Solutions, uh, on, uh, on the annual trash days, uh, which are this Friday, uh, from nine to 12 noon, uh, and from one to 4:45, and then Saturday, the 7th, uh, from eight to 4:45, they're not even going to take lunch, um, but, uh, go there with, if you've had trouble getting rid of some of your trash, uh, have some things that they normally don't take, this is an opportunity for the citizens of Guthrie, uh, to come and, uh, and, um, get rid of some of that, that trash. So please, uh, please make that, make that happen, with no other items.
Another thing, Mayor, I, I also have tickets, too, to Bow Wow Lual, so.
There we go, there we go.
There we go.
With no other items on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned, thank you very much.